... by an interest in taking money from the board that body lacks. I do want to make clear, respecting certainly the OSP's review and certainly in advance, I respect their conclusion. It is the conclusion of our independent investigation that no board member sought to intentionally take board money for their own personal use.
Do we have an idea when the special prosecutor's office will release their findings?
I don't know, Mr. Durso. We have been in communication with the state prosecutor. Mr. Sidon has made it very clear that anything that the state prosecutor's office asks for, they should receive promptly. And frankly, if there is any need for discussion around the documents and how the documents kind of fit together, that we should assist the Office of State Prosecutor in organizing and otherwise reaching its own independent conclusion. I have reason to believe, I am an optimist, that the OSP's investigation will be concluded certainly in the next two weeks. They've been working diligently, as you know, and certainly the press and the other interested parties know, putting these documents together in a way that is coherent, takes time. But I believe that the Office of State Prosecutor will complete its investigations in the next two weeks.
Then I have a follow-up question. Procedurally, this is an agenda item for our next board meeting. Does that progression of information or lack of it impact when we as a board should act?
Not at all. And I think that's an excellent question. There could be, could have been a justifiable, supportable tact that the ad hoc committee could have taken to say, hey, wait a second, we're not going to do anything until the Office of State Prosecutor has determined what all went on. No reform, no discussion as to clarity going forward. However, this ad hoc committee absolutely made the decision, again with forceful general counsel, to move forward with respect to its recommendations, whatever the Office of State Prosecutor determines.
Coming back to the bullets on page four, can you just cut? We're talking about segregation of lines of authority, review of blacking, sanitation of duties for making purchases, authorizing purchases and payments, and doing bargaining is important. I know we've discussed, or in terms of our new processes going forward, I mean, we've had the issue where our chief of staff is the one, or has been the one, approving expenditures for board members and or changing that to include the board vice president. Is that what you were talking about in terms of you shouldn't have somebody solely subordinate to the board reviewing essentially the expenditures of their boss?
That's exactly right, Mr. Kaufman. And even in the state of Maryland, as well as other municipalities across the country, there have been instances where the lines of authority crossed with respect to approval and reconciliation. Clearly, the better practice is to ensure that approvals and questions regarding appropriateness of expenses are resolved at a level where a subordinate is not making the decision as to a superior. And so, yes, I think that's very important, and there was ambiguity with respect to that process in the prior guidance.
And I think one of the things we were also taking out deciding the superintendent, where he's designated, sort of signing off as an approver, and I think that is an issue that he is, would be appropriate for him to be reviewing board member expenditures.
Those are issues that your office is focusing on, and I know the superintendent is closely following the ad hoc committee's action and certainly will closely follow the board's action in regards to its guidance going forward. May I note that this board obviously is consisted of many lawyers because the focus on this report, as well as prior discussions with individual board members, was as detailed as your question. Not necessarily good, though. That's what it is.
And with regards to the OSP investigation, what impact, I mean, the fact that we are doing this, does that weigh, play any part in terms of, in your opinion, their ultimate resolutions, rather?
Two points. You know, first, your decision to be proactive with that regard to the OSP's review, I think, is certainly the most responsible way to go, number one. I believe that mutual reservers, like the Office of State Prosecutor, will certainly understand and respect the proactive nature of this committee's work and the board's work. To what extent it considers that clear proactive action, I can't speak for that.
Thank you very much. It's been a long process for you all and a perpetual, I believe, or listen, there've been a lot of documents you went through.
Yes, it's always a team effort, and two hours, Samantha Williams and Christian Douglas were invaluable. We do appreciate having the opportunity to work with your committee and certainly Mr. Sidon. And again, I want to reemphasize that it was no holds barred, and any question that we deemed appropriate was asked. Mr. Kaufman, would you like me to remain, or would you?
You're welcome to. I think we'll probably be taking up some changes.
My question.
Yeah, some changes, I guess, based, you know.
Sure.
Given your, given the recommendations, but I think we're able to make changes to our, you know, our ongoing review of our expenditures, so it's really your call as to whether or not. But, you know, I think probably it's best for you.
I'll say.
Okay. So we are up to item three dot one. And this is now the, where we are on the latest draft of our compensation expense standards proposed by King. So if this King wants to take us through, you can start wherever you see the changes from the last time, and I think we'll be proposing changes if we go along.
All right, we'll just kind of go in order, given the, as a follow-up to the ad hoc committee's discussion from July 30. Starting with item number one, the preapproval process language was added to indicate that a written request shall be reviewed and of the items that will be considered during that review would be the cost of the expenditure and education issues. We could add to that.
Go back.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm looking at the opening paragraph. I think we could just go left, meaning adding the language, you know, so the last sentence there, board members who lack official business, this exercise, do care of previous and current expenses. I think we're probably adding some language about that those expenses should be neither lavish nor extravagant, which would mean education foundations, their guidelines. So I would propose that we add, which shall be neither lavish nor extravagant.
Right.
And I think the other thing on number one.
Let's go back to that.
Okay.
And I guess we want further delineate, but do care intrudes does not encompass lavish and extravagant, or we want to be as specific as possible?
I think we should be as specific as possible. We had talked about, when we looked at the education foundation standards, and I think that came, there's IRS language, I think we need, I think it's a good idea.
The only change, I guess, on number one, and it's just a technical thing, I think, rather than say it's outlined below, I mean, we could say, section, I think it just went through, and not all of our sections, the last couple of sections are numbered, so I'll just number the sections of the last couple pages. You know, we go through, we go through number 10, and we have the procedures. So I'm just making those, I'll go down to 12 or 13. 13, big dispute resolution process.
Okay.
Just saying, involve the dispute resolution process outlined in section 13 below.
You may notice there's that introductory phrase to the manual items that says that a board member may be reimbursed for expenses directly to official board business as follows.
Well, you know, I just think we should have some way of, whatever, on these paragraphs, so I'll leave it here in the final, the final mark, I think, is probably the best way of numbering them. So I just think that we should just make a specific reference, just rather than just say, "outlawed."
All right, there was also a language that was added in paragraph one that referenced in the event of preapproval for the singular event, meaning sought by both board officers, the chair of the board's fiscal management committee, and board's chief of staff for preapproval. Moving to section two, number one.
Before we leave one, because I don't want to split too many years, but could there be conceivably an event that the board officers and the fiscal management chair were all attending? And if so, who is the approver? Or do we cross separation?
I think you, my humble suggestion would be that you can't legislate everything, and that's the type of situation that crosses the bridge and cuts.
Okay.
Please, no.
Section two B, there is language added regarding how the board shall establish a list of non-local meetings and conferences. And then there was a reference recognizing that it may not be feasible to identify all of the non-local meetings and conferences. There's a process by which board members, if there was an event that a board member wanted to attend that was not considered as part of the development for the annual meeting list, they could then seek free approval to attend that particular item, that particular event. So there was just an image added to paragraph two B, to outline that process.
And this is, this language doesn't apply to the technical purposes, it's just fees and prices.
Non-local meetings and conferences. Also, in section two F, the ad hoc committee asked that room service be added to the list of items that shall not be considered reimbursable expenses. And there's new language in two G that references how board members must exercise do care intrudes for meal expenses during non-local travel.
So I think that's where, I'm going to propose that we change that language and have language on per diem expenditures. I'll use some language that they took out of the Baltimore County, Baltimore County their processes, but it says, "Board members and staff who are approved of non-local travel shall be reimbursed at the published federal government for per diem rates for meals and incidentals, for the dates of travel, for the city where that conference, convention, or other board business is conducted." So that's, that basically, we would be going to a system of per diems for non-local travel rather than reimbursement for actual expenditures.
I think that's a good idea, and that eliminates the need for credit.
And I will put out there for our discussion the issue of cash advances. This is something I know that Venable included in their report. And I'll just, I'll give you a language, which I pulled also from some of the other boards, says, "Cash advances in amount not to exceed the per diem allowance may be authorized by the board president for good caution, if requested, at least one month prior to the anticipated date of travel." Now, some boards have a dollar limit. Different alternatives, if, you know, A, do we want to do the cash advances at all? And B, whether or not if they're doing per diems, if the cash advance is same with per diem, or per diem not to exceed a certain number of amount, I mean, I guess there's different variations of how we could do that. But I guess the first concept is do we want to authorize advances?
And just as a, two clarifications. One, I take it that this is all in the context of a move away from, not to step ahead, but these, that's it.
Move ahead.
It's eliminating the credit cards and just blanket, like eliminating the credit cards, going for per diem. I feel somewhat uneasy about the cash advance, but I, I guess I can, there may be circumstances where someone might not have a credit card, might have a, might be at their limit, but I, I, you know, I think in a, once upon a time, there, many more people didn't have credit cards or multiple credit cards. I, I don't know, I.
Well, perhaps the cash advance could take place on, again, on a case-by-case basis.
I think that that's what that language is, that you just read.
For good caution, so the, it's not going to be a routine thing, it's make or explain why you need a cash advance, so not be able to, you could outline which, like, on a case-by-case basis, for good caution.
I think that I.
Because there, as Ms. O'Neil mentioned, there are circumstances where that could be a factor for.
Do we, so assuming we're going to do language like this, is it, is the not to exceed the per diem allowance?
Right.
Just leave it at that?
Yep. In G, I'm going to use section H. Okay. The next change with, the language will come in section four. We're going to talk about section four B, which is again for local ticketed events, again, getting at the idea of the development of the annual meeting list. And if there was a particular event that was considered during the development of the annual meeting list, and it was not approved by the full board, then that particular event, board members may not get reimbursed to attend that event, getting at the idea that once a decision is made by the full board, there is no appeal process for that. In section C, there is clarification in language that ticket costs for board members to attend retirement celebrations for, and chief of staff are not eligible for payment or reimbursement. And then in D, language was added clarifying that pre-approved ticketed events and the costs for those should be processed through board education access. I, I don't know if it, that language should be, it must be, you know, I think. I don't think board members should be doing this individually. Change that, change that. Hearing no other changes, moving to section five, specifically section C, we added language clarifying that to be reimbursed for meals, board members must complete and submit the request for reimbursement form. There are no other comments about section five, moving to section C.
We want to say that the area does submit a non-acceptance receipt maybe, because, maybe cause for denial of reimbursement?
Probably so, even though I think that's implied, but we might be a little stating behind this.
I mean, there are times, I don't know if there was a time that I tried to get a parking receipt and sure didn't spit out the parking, it's, I don't know if you want to get absolutely locked in, but I think.
I broke the parking machine.
If I could just make a general point, as we, as you consider the recommendations, as Mr. Sidon indicated, I think respectfully, the ad hoc committee and certainly the board needs to also focus on the fact that you don't want to handcuff yourself with so many rules, guidance, et cetera, that board members are dissuaded from completing their jobs. You don't want to create an environment where board members do not go out and meet their constituents, students, parents, and other relevant folks to advance the business of the board.
Or to go one step further, that we scare potential board members away from serving.
So the census of the, the census of the board is to add or not add that language?
I think we should add.
Moving on to section six, in section A, there was language added to indicate that board members will be provided with a cellular phone as well as computer equipment, and we were already having a problem with.
Which is already the case, isn't it? That's just clarifying, but is it the same?
Correct. And there was language based on the last board meeting, for six B, to indicate that board members will be reimbursed up to $30 per month for internet access and telephone calls related to board business. You know, I mean, on a telephone call is related to board business, I mean, I, you know, when I have long-distance calls, I use my cellphone, or I, I mean, I use the Black Bear. So, I mean, I don't, I think everybody's cellphone is that way, so you're not getting, you're not needing to use, to make a long-distance call.
That was an artifact of the existing policy.
I know, I, I just raised that, and, you know, I expressed my concern previously about the internet, that it is, it's like having a utility in your hands these days.
Yeah, I would have to say I'm not comfortable with the internet reimbursement. We are then providing for ourselves reimbursement that many of our constituents may not have, certainly many of our students, even though we are in this digital age. I've mentioned before, if any one of us left the board today, I doubt that we would eliminate internet service, so I'm proposing we should write that.
And I'll support.
So it's just delete the altogether?
And I have a question about this, in this section, about board members, the need, you know, should, you need equipment, I mean, or it should be purchased by the board office. Do you think that you could add, all equipment purchase must be made by the board education office? That was the intent behind the language about the major or routine purchases of supplies and equipment should be handled through the board office. Do you think, do you think that's strong enough, clear enough?
Well, for example, my printer is board-provided, has been a bit temperamental recently. I should not just go out and purchase one and expect to be reimbursed. That should go through the board office, if that's kind of what you're saying.
Right.
Also, even routine supplies, I imagine if the board gets better prices on uncartridges, paper and all that, you shouldn't do this, you know, the out and in.
Sure. And also tax exempt.
Right.
Purchases.
Perhaps it should say, however, supplies and equipment should be handled through the board office.
What that is, it's.
Oh, just take out the, so it's not, there's no lack of, there's clarity and not ambiguity if this is a license, but I'm sure it can.
In section seven, based upon the committee's last discussion, there was a, purchase was added for a credit card, because in some instances, they are used as purchase cards. And then also, there was a language added that if things fail or default or conflict in regulations, that the purchase of credit cards may be, that may result in revocation of card use privileges. And then also a language that indicates how, if such a case arises, the board officers may refer to review for the full board, and in the case of a board officer, the chair of the fiscal management could refer that or go review. I would propose that we structure this whole section based upon the Venable recommendation and, you know, I think the ad hoc committee has, you know, this member of the ad hoc committee, this member of the ad hoc committee delays, we should just eliminate the issue and just do away with the credit cards. At least the purchase cards. No. Oh, the office. Of the office.
I think administrative.
Administrative, so eliminate.
I agree, I'm in favor of that.
So, so your request.
All right, and then the next addition was in section nine, there was a couple of sections.
So in section eight, you can strike the line and draw a block.
And, and.
Give us a second.
Up this. Okay. And then moving to section nine, there's indication that board staff shall be subject to expense policy and regulations applied to board members.
So I was just adding a second sentence there, it's that board administrative staff may be issued purchase cards.
And then in paragraph ten, there was language added regarding the extenuating circumstances. And that if a situation arises, board members should use their business judgment. And then, if possible, the board members should advise the board president of such circumstances in advance of the expenditure. And in the next section, remove the reference to procedures for processing monthly credit card loans. But in terms of the other expenses, B, there's a clarification that the board staff shall process and review the expense forms for technical completion. And then also, in E, that the superintendent of schools or the superintendent of staffs of need will review the expense forms in this type of payment.
This came under A, no later than the first business day of the next month. So, the form on the thirty of July is the first of March.
First, no later than the first business day of the next month.
Well, in March, is the next one?
Yes, but I think they were, the intent was to give an additional time so we can do some clarification.
So the June expenses are due by August first.
Maybe we should include an example? I mean, I know that may sound a little off.
No, no, because, I mean, it seems to, it seems to me that when you say the next month, in some cases, it's a day or two or one.
I think we should, you know, for example, June expenses will be due August first.
Right, and that's, that's a typical lag for adding.
And just on the, once again, where we reference dispute resolution process, we say listed below, we reference where, wherever, whatever that is.
And then we want to do dispute resolution section, we just won't go back.
Let's go back. So I think on number twelve, it says, board's fiscal management committee shall review on a semi-annual basis summary reports on the status of expenditures by board members in the board office. Question is whether or not, I mean, whether or not that should be on a weekly basis, I mean, it's semi-annual is once every six months, it's only six months, whether or not that should be more frequently than every six months, whether or not it should be every three months? Do you know what, if anything, other school boards do on this one?
Mr. Gerso, in that regard, I've seen many other school board policies, as well as similar boards that are not school-related. And many of them have an annual review. I would suggest to stick with a bi-annual review, because that could be, in my view, exceeding the best practice.
I would.
The language, okay, it says summary reports, whether or not, I'm not quite sure what, what's, you know, what exactly, in terms of summary, or exactly how much detail should be going into the reports that are going to the fiscal management committee?
I think in terms of that information, that is something that the board staff will be looking for, they're willing to assist the fiscal management committee in making sure that the summary reports provide the information, many of us are just, you know, to have clarity.
Right, I just don't want to, you know, this, you know, the last six months, we spent thirteen thousand dollars, or whatever, I mean, I, you know, I think that if, if the idea here is a level of oversight, that if not, you know, the more detail is provided, the better.
And what of this is available to the board?
All, all of them.
Through the fiscal management committee?
I mean, I was going to propose, the language that said these reports will be included as items of information to the board on its monthly agenda. So just so we get all the items of information now, in terms of legal services, and construction status and all that, that once these reports have been reviewed, again, they will be reviewed for the next.
So that the reports that were sent to fiscal management committee will then come to the full board?
Right.
As items of information. And certainly, when the chair of the fiscal management committee makes his report to the full board on, on-
Committee updates.
Committee updates, you could describe it as well.
Hearing no additional changes to dispute resolution process. There is better, language added to clarify that the, in the event of an unfavorable ruling by the board president, the board member may refer the matter to the full board prior to the meeting.
So the only question I have is, can we handle expenses of the board president? That's the third question. Do I use this proposition to add, to say, except expenses, the board president should be reviewed by the chair of fiscal management?
Because, as current president, as you know, you have been president, there are significant expenses as president that other board members probably do not occur.
Sure. At least travel. I, I think it would be appropriate to include that.
Just as a procedural matter, is it, am I actually correct that with those changes, subject to the wording, that you're then going to make a recommendation of this?
Right.
Yes. I mean, I think we have to work out the appropriate green sheet, or the, you know, the appropriate form that this will take. Here's the proposed handbook language, or here's, you know, what sort of changes.
It's a work.
We'll work it out. So, do you all agree that these are, these are the recommended changes that have? Like, yes. So. That brings us to the forms. Question, is there a correction in this one? Twenty-fourth. Should we take a moment to, and go through them one by one?
We'll start with the first one, the request for pre-approved board member expenditure. Based upon the last, the discussions the last meeting, there is language added to indicate that the form should be submitted with documentation no later than two weeks prior to the date of the conference meeting, travel, et cetera. There was also a category added for other, in case the first three categories were not sufficient, or there was a, and then an event, an item, and they fall out of those three categories.
You know, probably in the category of mit, of mitigating the, the activity location, I'm not, might be a little bit squeezed, but I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll say this will be all subject to four men by hour, graphic.
Very well. Right, hearing nothing else, there's the next one, the request for reimbursement of expenses paid by board of education member.
Remember?
And there was language here added, that about all original items received, being in reference to the conference rights for the cost of the news. And, ah. There is also, down at the bottom, a section, it was modified to indicate that the superintendent, which was the board for completeness, and then also that the request will be processed for payment.
So, so what would be an example where this form is used?
I'm just getting, ready to say, it may well be that for non-local travel.
Or still would be for local, I mean, for local, local meals. To the extent that we're still authorizing meals subject to the caps. That would be local. Local. I mean, I guess the question is whether or not, how, if we're now going to the dam, it's for non-local. Or not, would we use this form, whether or not we just, you know, need a reimbursement form for, for the days?
I thi- I think we can work that out, but I think this, this form still has uses, as you mentioned.
And I think we talked last time on the very last line, the superintendent or dizzy, we were, how did we, what was the discussion around that?
That essentially, as the board employee, the superintendent was not in a position of approving the form, but rather just reviewing it for completeness. And then, which kind of also initiates a board processing of payment.
And in the case it was not approved, does, does it just end at that point?
By the chief of staff and board president, vice president.
No, the superintendent's part. Say, what happens if he doesn't sign it? So for this, evaluation.
I mean, I, I don't know that I see that happening either, but it's.
Okay.
And the next form is a board of education, board of education member mileage reimbursement request. There was language added that tracks the handbook, the post-language and handbook, about the purpose of the travel being aligned with the priorities and work of the board, and instances in which they may seek reimbursement. And then also indicated that it should be, the form should be completed and submitted no more than ten business days after the end of the month, which the mileage is requested.
And that's essentially the current practice, correct?
Yes.
I recommend that the timing for submitting this is the same as the timing for the, for the expense forms, whatever the, for the first business day of the next month, and with the, with the clarity of the example.
There's a difference in the way in which the items are processed, or it does be an export on that, but it's my understanding mileage doesn't get up. There's a different timeline for that. And we can certainly look into it and get more clarity about that.
I think that if it's possible, it would be better to be consistent, so people are.
I think they've rounded up and it's got a full data review that you're actually.
The only difference, this is, the only difference from our current form is this now shows from, from and to, so.
It provides more space to each other.
It provides more space, so. Right now, one just says where to go, two, pretty much assumes the walk is traveled from our, our home. And it puts mileage, puts mileage, so. So. So.
How about coming back? There's only from and to.
So, for example, if you're coming from home to-
Here.
In the back.
Right.
And then if you were leaving here, and going to another event, it just helps to track the-
Understand, but today, today, we tend to add up from home to here. Is that it? And you keep, you keep, you keep back home or on?
No, no, I think you'd go, then have another line, that'd be from here to home.
Right, it would just be a separate entry.
As opposed to just doing round trip?
Right, it'd be a separate entry.
So we'll need to educate folks on, on that change.
I will sign up for that. You're going to have us. Okay, so, the next item is our list of proposed ticketed events and conferences.
At the last ad hoc committee meeting, there was a discussion about developing an approved list of events. As events, by that, I mean more globally, conferences and meetings, as well as pre-approved ticketed events. And at the last meeting, there was a census of event invitations through the board office. And from that, we developed a recommended pre-approved list for, this would be July one of fourteen, that's coming this year. So that, that list is for that, so there's that to include here.
So I think the issue also is, we need the non-recommended ticketed ones, because again, you know, I think it's for the board to look at both lists. And once we-
Well, so they've included the universe in the next, I mean, what we had before.
Right, so you have to look at both through, and consider whether or not we, the ad hoc committee, want to invite those from the non-recommended list to the recommended list, and from the recommended list, the non-recommended list. So we can make that recommendation if we go to the full board. So. I don't know how you all want to proceed, I mean, there is, I'm not sure. I mean, we've got also the list of the, the prices of all these events, so I'm not, I'm not sure. More of this, I guess, separate list, I'm not, trying to figure out, but if we want to consider the costs as well, deciding whether or not.
Can I make a recommendation, just for efficiency's sake, that maybe you consider the list of pre-approved events first? And since this is new, you may want to create a small list of expressly not approved events, conferences, but with the idea that anything that's on either list would have to seek the preapproval process, and over time, and in some years, as you have experience with this, you can make that list more.
Well, why don't we, why don't we start with looking at the pre-approved list and see if there are any, any things that should come off this list? And if you have questions, I can fill in some of the spreads you have, where I have the costs of those events.
Can I ask you a question above that, with the pre-approved?
Sure.
Would it be safe to assume that the Council of Urban Boards of Education, I don't know if it's the annual or the summer, is in Miami? Is this to be interpreted, that if the entire board chose to go to Miami, that's, that's pre-approved? Well, we will be presenting this list to the board, the full board, and...
I think, you know, on the, on, even on the annual conference, like the NSBA conference, in the worst of the recession, I mean, we said, we, one year, there were only two board members, we, we determined that there were only two board members that would go to the annual conference in San Diego, and then the next year in Chicago, we determined that only one representative would go. And so, I, I think that, you know, we may be faced with that situation again, and, you know, FRN typically, it's only, it's only been two people, because it's based on the congressional districts. The leadership portion of that conference is really intended for state officers. I, I went as Maine, not as Montgomery County, to the leadership, but I wasn't part of FRN, because I wasn't the FRN delegate, but there were, there, you know, we, you know, it's basically two people most, so, I mean, I think we need to make some determination, and, gosh, if everyone was to suddenly start going to both NSBA and to Q, I mean, we would be, our travel budget would be out of sight.
No, I...
I think we need to make, I, I agree with you, Mike, I think we need, you know, I, I always thought NSBA annual conference and the Maine annual conference, the seminars for me, although they in the past used to do a summer leadership conference, you know, in Cumberland and various places, they don't do that anymore, but I think that our budget would be out of sight. I mean, I think FRN, we should say two, you know.
Well, so, one way you can handle this without, instead of putting it on this list, is just making it subject to preapproval.
Or annually determine how many representatives.
I think listing it as pre-approved denotes death. So, keep going, so everybody can go, and I, I don't think we need that. Well, remember, it's going to be the full board next week, it's going to make the call, so, so, that would be the, I would say, okay, is everybody going to NSBA, is everyone going to Maine, is everyone going to Q? You get the authorized or not, I mean, I, I guess we can make a recommendation that no more than two board members go to Q, or no more than two board members go to FRN, and we can certainly make that recommendation. Got your flag on?